Need to order. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the Governing Body of all other special assessments and taxing districts for which said boards so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please take the role?
Supervisor Starky?
Here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Vice Chair Borges?
Here.
And I'll make note that Chair Wilson is absent.
Thank you. At this time, let's take a brief moment of reflection. Supervisor Howard, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Neil's still not here. Okay. At this time, do we have an introduction of any new employees out there? Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dorothy Watlow, Deputy Director for Social Services, Department of Health and Human Services. I'm very happy to introduce five new employees.
Wow.
We have Ariana Smith. She's with the Social Service Branch, a social service aide. She moved here in 2015. She has nine years as an IHSS caregiver, and she's very proud of her five-year-old son. So, welcome, Ariana.
Welcome.
Johnny Lee. He was born and raised in Del Norte County, and he has over fifteen years' experience working with developmentally disabled individuals. So, we're very pleased to have him as a social service aide in the Social Services Branch as well. And then, we have Jesus Santos Torres. He is an integrated caseworker. He has a bachelor's degree from California State University in Bakersfield, and he has over sixteen months' experience working for Kern County Child Support Branch. And so, he's in the Public Assistance Employment Training Branch. And then, we have Debra Earls, also for the Public Assistance Employment Training Branch as an eligibility worker. She has thirteen years' experience working with California Tribal-Tanahaf Partnership as a caseworker, and she was also an employment and education worker for North Coast Substance Abuse for a Year, and has over two years' experience working for Harrington House. So, a lot of knowledge coming our way there. And Daniel Gonzalez, hiding over here. He is an office assistant for the eight-eighty branch, or eight-eighty office, and he has a bachelor's and master's degree from San Jose State, and he has a year-and-a-half experience in customer service, so he will serve our reception area well. So, I wanted to welcome all of these individuals.
Very nice. Welcome all of you.
Welcome, and Dorothy, I wanted to say congratulations on your promotion. I think that's wonderful, but welcome to all of you as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Valerie.
Thank you, guys. Do we have any other new employees? No more? Good. Okay. Counsel, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes. The board approved two new, for the County Council's Office, to initiate two new receivership, receiverships within the community. Once those are filed, they will become public record. Additionally, the board denied a claim against the county and also approved the settlement of a workers' compensation claim.
Thank you. Okay.
One second. Counsel, can you verify the, do I need to note the votes?
For all three actions, it was four in approval and zero against. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, the chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the board members to the agenda at this item. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any of those? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to receive brief reports. Supervisor Starky, would you like to lead us off?
Oh, thank you, Vice Chair Borges. I'm going to be somewhat quick. I attended the strategic one-on-one sessions with the Strategic Plan Consultant, and I'm happy to see that many of the concerns that I brought forth are in the focus area that we're going to be talking about a little bit later today in the agenda with regard to the overall goals of the county. I participated in several of the California Jobs First meetings, and I included a planning table meeting last night. We have several projects that throughout the community we're working on being considered to put into a portal. It's a process, but, so we are working on those things. Two of the main projects are a food hub locally, which would allow for us to have a fish food processing plant, getting some of our cultural, Hmong, Latino, tribal foods, and so that we can have local food that is sustainable here in Del Norte County and provided throughout our bordering counties. We also presented our, the city, we're working with the city, they have a discovery center, and we're hoping to have that kind of be the hub for visitation for trails throughout, it's kind of our big idea to have mountain bike trails that connect our communities here in Del Norte County. We were a little rusty on our presentation, but we're going to get that together and start really working to move that idea forward. I'm continuing to assist with the CASA of Del Norte fundraiser. It's called the Crystal Ball. It's March 23rd. It's a sold-out event, but I love to see the community when they come together and they support an organization that they believe in, and that's providing advocacy for our foster youth in the community. I attended an opioid settlement group meeting, and that's again on the agenda today because we're trying to work with finding out where the gaps in services are and how we can then focus on the gaps in services and not necessarily try and do the whole entire thing. So, that's on today's agenda as well. I attended the wind power informational meeting, and that was a two-hour meeting, and it was really informative. It was about the pros and cons of wind power. The meeting was modeled very similarly to what the Uroch Tribal Summit did with regard to wind power, but that was two days and not two hours. So, it was a lot of information that was really kind of truncated in, but the planners of that meeting did a real great job to get that information in a short amount of time, and it's just starting the community conversations about that. And it was for pros and cons. There was not, I didn't feel, I felt it was very fair across the board. I didn't feel that it only addressed why we're trying to sell it or why we're trying not to buy it. It was, I felt very neutral. I attended the special board meeting here relative to the strategic plan, and I just want to be grateful for the community members that came out and spoke up and decided to have your voices heard. The strategic plan also had a survey that went out to the public, and Candace, this is in response to your question, but, and so that was filled out, and my understanding, and we can ask Mr. Hooper when he comes later, but over four hundred people provided input into that strategic plan, which is great, and I'd love to see that community engagement and involvement, and I will ask if that is still available for people to participate in. And then, I participated in a webinar prep call for a webinar that I'm going to do through for NACO, that's the National Association of Counties. As a participant on the national level Reaching Rural program, I've been exposed to a lot more opportunities that highlight our rural area, that need, focus on rural communities and the services that we don't necessarily get because we don't live in a larger jurisdiction. So, at the end of this month, I'll be presenting to NACO some of the strategies that we're able to implement in small towns and see if we can't leverage our skills and knowledge to keep obtaining the assistance that we have on the national level. And then, it's that time again, I did attend the first planning session of the Fourth of July. I am the co-chair again this year. It's always a lot of work, but it's such a staple event for our community, and I love being able to help organize something that is a family fun and creative event for all of us to participate in. Thank you.
Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the stuff that some supervisors mentioned here today, but we did attend, as Supervisor Starky said, a lot of conversations specific around the SURF, which was previous, now called Jobs First, planning for economic development in our community. I'm glad to see that there continues to be a lot of participation in those meetings. In addition, the strategic planning meeting, which you mentioned, and also the wind power piece, that conversation, which was organized by members of the community that had essentially a strong interest in really learning more, I thought was very well done. The individuals that attended on behalf to represent a panel of folks to help inform our community presented a wide range of perspectives that I thought really helped communicate to us that not only is this process quite a ways out, potentially ten to twelve years out, but in addition, a process that we don't have a lot of control of, and I think Oregon's experiencing that right now. But one thing that resonated quite well with me and I think others in the room is that we do need to be at the table as a community, and there's ways to do that, and engaging earlier and often, and also learning from how our neighbors approach the issue, in this case Humboldt County, I think is important for us. So, I know we'll have future discussions about that, but I just want to give a compliment and a shout-out for all of us, and I know Darren was there and Joey and Valerie, that it was very well done and great job, guys, for putting that together and getting the community up to speed on what we do know to date. I wanted to thank Supervisor Short for attending the North Deal meeting and covering for me while I was in Fresno at the Pacific Marine Fisheries Management Council meeting. Been working with Caltrans specifically on the audit of Highway 199, which is essentially occurring from Highway 101 to the Oregon border. This audit, which was done by a third party, was just published last week. It's in draft form right now. We're probably going to take about thirty days to review it, but it brings up a lot of issues that are currently sneaking through the cracks and that we could potentially solve with small shop projects that will allow fixes in that highway system. My hope here is that we find the dollars necessary within the state budget and Caltrans to help move some of these projects forward, because 199, I think at this point, until some of the major fixes are done with the STA project, but I do think that will help resolve a lot of the crashes that we are currently seeing on the highway. I also attended California State Association, Association of Counties meeting last week. Of note, and I think where we need to really pay some attention, and I mentioned this to Jackie, the Martin v. Boise decision, which is essentially a decision that the Ninth District Court essentially settled for a lot of us Western states as it relates to dealing with homeless in our public areas, and that will be in hearing with the Supreme Court in April. There's been forty-two amicus briefs that have been filed to date, including CSAC, which we join with the League of Cities in filing. I think the Supreme Court, based on our attorney's opinion in taking up this matter, will really push strongly to reverse the actions that were taken by the Ninth District and really help a lot of us communities, counties, and cities deal with what we've seen as ramifications to date, which is a slight spread in the amount of homeless population within our city streets, on our sidewalks, and in our county parks. Hopefully, we could find ways to deal with those once the decision is made sometime in late June, July, but at this point, I'm glad to see a process moving forward that will help resolve this for the Western states. Been helping with the planning with the city on the Komomi Festival Celebration, which will take place on the 12th and 13th of April next month. I think it's going really well, and we will have nine delegates here from Rikuz and Tokyo, Japan, to help celebrate the arrival of the boat and that commemory. Yesterday, March 11th, 2011, was the anniversary of the great Tohoku earthquake in Japan. We helped to remember the occasion that unfortunately, where there's a lot of life lost, over twenty thousand lives by that, and then also, as you saw from various postings, maybe on social media, the amount of damage that we had nine hours later in our Crescent City Harbor. And then, I wanted to end the discussion. This board's been paying particular attention to the implications of closures as it's associated with marine fisheries last year. As you're aware, in August, the California State Department of Fish and Game took action to close all marine fishery in the state of California because of one species, which was the quillback. Nobody keeps this species. It's often tossed back, but there was no data collected for our region in the state of California when benchmark assessments were taking place. It showed the species is non-existent. We've worked very aggressively with the city, ourselves, and a lot of marine fishers, both on the commercial and recreational side, to find resolution with the Pacific Marine Fisheries Management Council to reopen our season. And with these meetings and the conclusion thereof, in Fresno, I think we have found alternatives to do that, that we hope to be adopted by the council in April. Alternatives will now be presented to the public over the next thirty days, and then we'll revisit those in April, and hopefully, with public support, we'll get those alternatives passed and have a season, which essentially opens from nearshore to Twenty Fathoms for next year, which will allow fishing and a lot of recreational tourism-type opportunities here again in our community. Where we also had a great deal of input and some success is really finding a way to reopen our salmon season, which prior to the closure of the groundfish season last year, salmon season was closed. That has a massive impact on our economy when we do need tourism here. The alternatives that have been, that have been put forward to the council by the various advisory groups that advise the Pacific Marine Fisheries Management Council, I think gives us some really good opportunities to go forward in April for some decisions to reopen the ocean fishery and also impact how the Klamath fishery responds to some potential openings here at the mouth, which obviously, as you go south on Highway 101 anytime during the summer and see the number of trailers down there, it's a massive impact to the climate economy. We'll continue paying attention to this, and one thing we do as a board need to pay attention to is the upcoming California Department of Fish and Game Commission meeting, which will set regulations for the Smith River. Last year, the Smith River was closed to all salmon. We're hoping, and I'm hoping, that with some support from this board, in addition, letters that have been sent by the Tala Wadini Nation, we'll have a salmon season again on the Smith River this year and be allowed not only to catch salmon and potentially release the wild ones, but keep all the hatchery fish that the Tala Wadini Nation have been raising throughout the year. And that is the end of my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Short?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. First thing I need to do is correct a misstep that I made last meeting when we were talking about the Union Street closure piece. We had a comment from one of the business owners, one of the gear shed owners, worried about access to, to the back of his property, and I misspoke and said that we would, you know, figure out a way to get him access. That was wrong. According to the vehicle code section that we're using to, to restrict this access, that piece of vehicle code forbids that anybody but emergency services has access behind those gates, so I definitely needed to correct that misstep, and I apologize for any confusion that that may have caused anybody. I had a meeting of the Housing and Services Subcommittee, part of the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee. They, it was reported that we have acquired a project manager, that's Lenders Construction Services, so now they're going to be working on developing an actual site plan, not a conceptual one, so that's some good news. And I also wanted to clarify, I believe the board is crystal clear on this, but I heard somebody say that we are making a homeless camp on Williams Drive, and I think that couldn't be further from the truth. We are working on making a transitional and wraparound services aid to these people so they can move into permanent housing. So, I wanted to be crystal clear that, that we're not creating another homeless camp on, on county property. As has already been mentioned, I attended that wind power meeting. I agree with Supervisor Starky, it was relatively neutral, very well attended, there had to have been seventy-five people there, so it was well, well put together and, and good informative meeting. I watched our last, the last part of the city council meeting, and I just wanted to say that they discussed a meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers about our jetty, and the Army Corps said that there was a marker on Google that says that our jetty is a historical place, so it's actually drawing people to the jetty. So, the Army Corps is working on having that marker removed on, on, on Google so people don't think it's a place to come visit and walk on. As you, as you mentioned, I attended the North Deal meeting, had a few pieces of information for you, Supervisor Howard, that was mentioned. You made a request for some action to be taken at the intersection of 197 and 199 to restrict people from kind of dangerously parking there on the, on the verge. They wanted me to relay to you that they have all the material to complete that project. They're waiting for good weather, so we should be seeing that coming in. They also mentioned that due to your involvement, the county won't be on the hook for the redesign of the Reyquell Bridge. It's going to be federal dollars that will have that redesign happen and have a more reasonable product that'll make our locals and landowners happier. The, as far as the last chance grade discussion goes, the schedule for selecting the alternative is, is, it will be done this summer. Once that selection is made, you know, that'll allow for other processes to get moving, environmental and cultural and studies and such, and the final environmental document subsequent to that will be published in the fall of 2025, so we are rolling right along. I know you've been traveling quite a bit, Supervisor Howard, but Matt Brady wanted to express thanks to you and Supervisor Bone out of Humboldt County for traveling and being in-person at the CTC meeting back in December. He said it went a long way, so he wanted me to push that along to you as well. And finally, speaking of 199, they have identified seven work locations for improvement on 199, and construction will start next summer. And that is it for me. Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. Appreciate it, Darren. Okay. Thank you. Moving on, so we have two minutes. Is that enough to do our consent agenda here? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have any public comment on consent agenda?
We have two minutes. They have to...
Oh, you can take all the time you need. Come on up if you have something.
I'll try to make my comments brief.
Don't take your time. You got three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I do see improvements in the consent agenda. It was part of the reason, you know, I started coming to these meetings, but, you know, we still approve a lot of things with, you know, the approval of one vote, and I just encourage you to find your influence and, you know, maybe don't comply with all the state mandates going on and what they're saying we have to do, but do what's best for our community. You know, like the $129,000 for Number Three, or just a few thousand for Number Four. Number Five, you know, gives future contract agreement privilege to the director without any oversight, and DHHS has probably doubled within the last dozen years, and public safety has gone dramatically down during that time. So, I just request you look at those statistics when determining future funding for things like that, and, you know, we know Proposition One is on the ballot, Mental Health Services Act, you know, mental crisis beds and emergency response like that. We have sheriffs, we have cops to do that. They're trained to do that, you know? We have facilities that can help people in need, that are a safety concern to themselves or a safety concern to the community. You know, so number, where was it? Six million for Number Nine? I mean, you guys don't have any questions? Is that on top of the 10 million you guys have already approved? You know, the $61,000 for Number Eight, DHHS, to start a book club? Did you guys know we have a library? I don't know. I hope you guys are reading this stuff before you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other public comment on consent agenda only? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I motion to approve.
We have a motion. A second. And a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to our 10:25 timed item, the public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please leave me your comments, three minutes or less. Any public comment? Mr. Beaver?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, just about what was being said in your, in the opening comments, I guess, if I could just, you know, you're, we're talking about the strategic plan today, and I'm kind of disappointed there's no real concept, good words, you know, to use. You want to improve things and make things more financially reliable, but how are you going to do that, right? So, how, what kind of plan are we going to have? Is it detailed? Is it just icing on the cake? Mr. Howard, you know, we, I'm kind of interested in the Brown Act. The Caltrans audit, is that through the North Deal? Is that where you, that audit is disclosed? Mr. Short, would you know?
I don't know.
I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Supervisor Short?
That's fine.
Well, the audit for Caltrans 199, the committee that you two are both selected to, is that the North Deal Committee?
I'm not sure.
On the committee list, there's a North Deal Committee that you two are, sit on. Is that where you get the Caltrans audit?
So, I'm sorry, Brandon, this isn't really a question-answer. It's more just a public comment, please, if you would.
Well, you know, in last chance grade, you know, how long are they going to watch it, right? Hopefully, this summer. Fishing, fishing closures, yeah, let's not close down our fisheries. Thank you. That'd be great. You know, the realignment with 832, we have facilities that, you know, we need, we don't want to put people in prison, right? It costs $135,000 a year to keep somebody in prison, but these people are a concern to the public safety and to themselves, you know, so we need to find a compromise. Here, we have all these empty facilities, we have people needing help, and yet, where are we spending the money? So, that was my comment. I appreciate you guys. Good luck. Lot of problems, and be bold, you know? Find your influence. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other public comment?
Is this public comment just a circular?
General public comment of items not on the agenda.
Okay. So, I can bring up the subject now?
Anything you want to talk about.
Awesome.
Morning. My name's Greg Gordon, and what I'm bringing up is, at the last meeting, February 27th, you guys wanted to implement the plan about surrounding what you guys called the Ruth Compound. Now, Friday, I dropped off some letters. I'm not sure if you guys all received those or not regarding... Now Friday I dropped off some letters, I'm not sure if you guys all received those or not regarding?
They're in our inboxes.
Okay, so that letter is, it brings up the rights and the constitutional rights of the Ruths that own that property. You guys want to surround this land with these blocks and put these gates in, but it's a violation of their constitution. You guys cannot not give them a key Darren, it's not right. If you haven't read the letters, I appreciate that you would. Anybody that wants to read the letter, I have it here. So it'll be right here for anybody that wants that. My interest in this is, I don't live at the Ruth compound. I'm retired from corrections, we're blessed, we don't need to. But my family, my wife is a Ruth, she was born a Ruth, she was raised on that land. Her dad built that, built that property back in, or bought the property back in 72. And it's turned into this entity that I believe that the county has imposed on the Ruth land. You guys don't have homeless shelters, you don't have site facilities. So what happens is the homeless all go out there. And then you guys want to charge the Ruth family for cleaning it up. It's not right, it's been happening for years. The fact that you guys refer to the place as Ruth compound is, it's defamatory to the family, it really is. Because what's happening is you're saying Darren's put out there what he thought was a good plan Darren. And I understand, it does need to be cleaned up, it's been cleaned up before. But what's happened is the county's not gone in there and maintained it. They should have kept the trespassers out, they should have kept the trash out. And what's happening is this duty has come upon the Ruth family to take these homeless people in. And they're good people, they're retired veterans, they've been in, the Vietnam veterans. I don't know if you guys actually talked to George and Roy who owns that land, but you guys should talk to him about implementing something that's a little better. Darren, you said you misspoke, for anybody that wasn't at the meeting last, what happens, they're trying to use a vehicle code and they got letters from CHP, they got letters from fire staff saying they can implement this thing and block them in their land, take the keys away and expect those people to walk off their property, not get in there, have any vehicle access. But I'm not sure why you said that Darren, because your own letter from the CHP, from Lieutenant Roach specifically says at the end, so you don't violate their constitutional rights, the land rights, says right here, furthermore, I request the Crest City California Patrol Office be provided with access to the gate along with other law enforcement agencies, first responder agencies, utility companies, and private landowners. Do you realize that says that on there? Okay, this is my time, you could speak when I'm done.
Your time's actually up, so final thoughts if you would, I'll give you another couple seconds.
Okay, my point is that you guys have done this to the Ruth family's land. If, this is the same thing as if we were to take Darren Short's house property and a bunch of people moved around it, homeless people kept going on there. And the county is actually sending people over there. I was over there Friday, talked to Land's Brothers.
Okay.
And there was two people that dropped off by officers, two people. You guys are doing this, the hospitals are sending them over there too. And then you want them to pay for cleanup of the stuff that's going on.
Thank you Mr. Gordon.
So please read your letters, okay? And this does not, Bowery didn't vote on this, so it has nothing to do with it, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment?
Hi, it's Robert again. I don't really feel so great this morning, but I was, I'm going to keep hitting you guys up to dedicate the cannabis tax that doesn't exist anymore since I quit. I've asked all of you to make ask on the agendas. My business exists in Darren Short's district and District 1. I live in Chris Howard's district, Supervisor Starkey's been my only supervisor for the last few years though. I don't know that I'd go back to doing again, but I'm not paying rent again. And so the building, I guess we'll go bank it. I was the only one collecting the tax in the community as you all know, which I consider a punitive tax because of my criticisms over the years to you guys. So my thing is I didn't want to collect a punitive tax because you guys were bullies and I'm the dick of the community or something. But I wouldn't mind taking it if it was for a youth group, I think that'd be fun. Because you'd think of something bigger than yourself or whatever. Also, you know, the CEO of Sutter was at the healthcare district last, the last meeting. And they've been sending representatives. And we need more healthcare providers in our area. And so they actually are going to put it on the agenda to talk about how they would recruit and team up with Sutter and Open Door to recruit healthcare workers up here. And they've got like a million dollar budget. And, you know, of course Open Door made like an eight million dollar income in 2022 between all their clinics with 80 million in revenue. So there's money around, we've got Measure R and S. I think the big thing is to start talking about it with the healthcare district because that's why that building was built almost 20 years ago was the thought, you know? And they've totally lost their track, their Open Door has. You might even look into see if there's other people that would operate it a little better even, you know? And I don't want to down them, I know that they're, you know? But, but if they don't have a dentist and they don't have, you know, what are we, you know, is there anybody that could do it a little better? But yeah, I would expect to see it on a future agenda if I was almost anybody else in that community, you know? And that's kind of weird, you know? Joey's talked about it with me, he was on board with me, but then voted to keep it at 6% without going to a youth group. And I remind you, the money doesn't exist anymore. You know, the property tax for my business doesn't exist to the community. The 1% for the Measure R doesn't exist anymore, the 7 point something for the sales tax doesn't exist anymore. The 6% that I will only collect for a youth group does not exist anymore. The 3.2 million you got in Prop 64 grants last year, you shouldn't get anymore because you really have made an ordinance to try to prohibit cannabis out of the area. And it's, so I'd hope to see something. If anybody else presented it in front of you, I would think you'd put it on the agenda. I'm the only dispensary where you didn't see pot leaves outside and a dispensary sign in the community. The only one that you wouldn't have been able to tell unless you looked on leafly.com. And I did that, I'd be decent to my community. I just don't know why you guys aren't decent people, but thank you for your time.
Thanks Robert.
Vice Chair, if we could ask that this be placed on a future agenda? He has asked several times and I think it's worth discussing. So I'm going to make that request that we could place this on a future agenda.
So do we, how does that work? Is that just a request and we move forward with that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? No, I'm sorry. No, okay, seeing no more public comment, I'm going to close public comment. Moving on to our 10:30 timed item, we'll receive a presentation from the Social Services Branch of the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm sorry, you have more to say? Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'll allow, come on up.
I would just like to give my three minutes to my husband, if that's okay?
I don't believe we can do that, no. If you have a public comment, I'll listen to it, but.
It's the three minutes that is mine, I'm willing to give to him.
No, I'm sorry, no.
Okay, so what I have a question of, last meeting on 2/27/24, you Darren had made the statement that there was the justification to lock my brothers in with the homeless camp, that you intend to lock up, put up gates, not give them a key or anything, that your justification was 282 calls, emergency calls to that area. Can you tell me how many were directly involved my brothers, which are the Ruths? Can you tell me that on the record?
So like I told Mr. Bieber, it's not a question answer, just public comment, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, to answer that question, absolutely zero had any involvement with my brothers at all. And for you to justify why you're going to lock them up in a compound that you call the Ruth compound, which is against the law, and there's no justification. None of those phone calls to the emergencies, for emergency services involve them at all, thank you.
Thank you, I'll ask one more time, any more public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm closing it. Okay, moving on, item, or the 10:30 timed item, receive a presentation from the Social Services Branch of the Department of Health and Human Services, please.
Good morning, we have a presentation that you're about to see. It was a joint endeavor by our two interim program managers from the Social Service Branch, Katie Hampson and Kyle Frazee. And Katie will do the honors of presenting today. Has it changed his mind?
Nope.
Okay.
Good morning Supervisors, I am Katie Hampson. I'm going to go over a quick overview, as quick as possible, of our Social Services Branch. Next slide if it's available. So here's our structure. Our Social Services team is broken up into multiple different units that are overseen by two program managers. We have Adult Protective Services, IHSS Services, and RFA. We have an Emergency Response Unit and Child Welfare. We have an analyst team. We have a court unit which consists of two supervisors. And we have a wraparound and visitation unit. As you can see, we have a lot of vacancies right now, we're hiring. There's currently 21 out of 45 positions in the Social Services Branch that are vacant. 12 of those positions are social worker, case carrying, and investigating positions. The majority of the staff who are no longer employed with us have left the department for higher wages with other agencies. Next slide. Oh, I didn't, no, I had a mouse, thank you. Our Adult and Family Services includes the following programs. Adult Protective Services, which responds to allegations of abuse and neglect for vulnerable populations of elders 60 and older and for adults with developmental delays 18 and older. They provide case management and crisis intervention. In-Home Supportive Services is a Medi-Cal funded program designed for people who are so severely disabled that they are at risk of out of home care, such as skilled nursing facilities and other institutions. So IHSS Services is a program that allows them to stay safely in their home. Resource Family Approval Program is our foster youth license, foster home licensing program. Child Welfare Services consists of the following programs. Child Welfare, which receives reports of suspected child abuse and neglect in the community. If it meets our mandate, we intervene by investigating and assessing the safety of our children. If it is open for service, then depending on the family's needs, services offered include pre-court services, court ordered family maintenance services, family reunification services, and permanency planning. We also have an independent living program for foster youth and probation youth ages 15 and a half to 21 years old. ILP provides them skills and programs to assist them. They can be former foster youth to achieve self-sufficiency prior to and after leaving foster care. Wraparound is an intensive, community-based effort for the provision of individualized services for children and adolescents with complex and enduring multi-system needs. Meaning they can be referred by the school district, by probation, by mental health agencies. It's a voluntary program where a child welfare, social worker, and a parent partner works with the family to wrap them around with other agencies. A screenshot of data we wanted to provide to you was this fiscal year's amount of investigation referrals that we've received monthly. As you can see, the data will go up around the school year. We believe that's when children go back to school and eyes are on from mandated reporters. A caseload summary. We currently have 110 open investigation referrals with an average of over 19 referrals across six staff members, which includes supervisors and line staff. We have 119 open cases with an average of over 25, 24 cases per five staff. One worker carrying 44 cases. In comparison with the numbers provided to us by the state, investigative workers should manage no more than 12 active investigations at a time and no more than eight new investigations. And ongoing and preventative social workers should carry no more than 15 to 18 family cases at a time, with no more than 10 of those children being out of home placement. Historically, our staff have operated with much smaller and manageable caseloads. Currently, our Emergency Response Unit, we have one supervisor and one social worker with the supervisor carrying a caseload of 53 open investigations. With the influx of staff leaving the department, it causes an increase in our caseload numbers which is impacting our ability to carry out services. We want to go over our county self-assessment system improvement plan process because that's something that we just started this year. Social Services doesn't have a typical audit process compared to other branches, but we participate in our county self-assessment to create our own system improvement plan. So the California Department of Social Services uses our child and family services review, case review data to assess and understand outcome measures to monitor and facilitate continuous quality improvement of services. We contract with UC Davis and they help us facilitate our CSA SIP development by providing county contacts from other counties who are excelling in identified outcomes and participate in a peer review. UC Davis will then compile the data and provide recommendations for continuous quality improvement and assist with the development of our SIP report. So for this current cycle 2024, CDSS and Social Services has identified the following areas for needing improvement. P3, which is permanency for foster youth and within 12 months of children in foster care who have been in care for 24 months or more. And we've also identified employee recruitment and retention. Compared to our previous SIP cycle from 2019 to 2023, we had five objectives. Permanency within 12 months from entering foster care, permanency within 12 months for foster youth and 12 to 33 months, ICWA youth re-entry into foster care, domestic violence service providers, and employee recruitment and retention. So we feel pretty accomplished that we've been able to mitigate many of those previous objectives.
Katie, could you define permanency for me?
Permanency outcomes are defined as entering illegal guardianship, entering adoption, entering a tribal customary adoption, cases that children aren't reunified with their families, but they, they're stabilized and their case is closed.
Perfect, thank you.
So that concludes my overview. Despite being severely short-staffed and overworked, our team continues to show up every day and give it their best. Not reflected in our data is the amount of secondary trauma and burnout associated with working in Social Services. Each time a coworker leaves to pursue a higher income, it increases, it causes an increase in our fear and anxiety amongst caseloads, amongst our team as our caseloads continue to increase. Thankfully, we're able to continue to foster positive outcomes for our children and families that we work with. Since January, we've closed three cases in which children were successfully reunified with their families and court oversight was no longer necessary. One particular family who had struggled with obtaining sobriety for over two years was able to maintain their sobriety and stability. After putting in a tremendous amount of work, this family was able to achieve complete stability, employment, housing, and sobriety. We celebrated this case's closure in the courtroom with Yurok Wellness Court, Tribal Judge Bowers, and Del Norte Superior Court Judge McHale Fresh. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to open this up to public comment before I bring it to the board. Oh, I'm sorry, is there more? Oh, okay, any public comment?
My, an impressive performance. One wonders if there's anybody left in the county that has eluded the grasp of Health and Human Services. It seems like that in order to be functional anymore in this county, one must go through some sort of regiment in the care of Health and Human Services that makes me think that, I'm wondering if there are any functional people left in this county that can continue to act like adults and make their own judgments and decisions that don't have to have a significant amount of help from our public services. Thank you.
Thanks Sam, any other public comment?
Norma Williams, Del Norte County.
Norma Williams, Del Norte County Employees Association, SEIU 10-1 president. Yeah, we have a severe shortage in that particular area of the branch. Think up where's up to about 40% overall for the entire department. As of January 31st, it was a little over 37%. But still, child welfare and APS, they're vital services, vital programs for this community. They protect the vulnerable in this community. And I am proud to represent the social workers and the associated staff that are in these two branches. They protect vulnerable children as well as vulnerable adults. They are part of our community, and that's what they are there for. That's what these programs are funded for. And yes, are they overworked? Yes, are they stressed out? Of course they are. But they still valiantly, every single damn day, on call, on weekends, on holidays if need be, they still provide that service, protecting our vulnerable population. That should be rewarded. That should be recognized. That should be applauded instead of denigrated. Thank you.
Good morning again. Thank you, Chair. It's a delicate subject, right? But it's one we have to have, right? Difficult conversations, difficult decisions. You know, we see how things have changed, you know, me growing up here to how it is now, and, you know, from spending all day on my bike to now not being able to allow my kids to go to the store on their bike. And we don't want to see people suffering. And we do need a good plan. Maybe we'll address it in the strategic plan, but, you know, our climate and a lot of things attract homelessness and people looking for a better climate in a lot of ways. It's a delicate balance. So I think we just need a comprehensive discussion about it. A lot of that has to do with real estate prices and the price of gas and the price of groceries. You know, what can we control? You know, those are good statistics that we're looking at. Higher numbers of people needing services. You know, a lot of those jobs have probably been created here recently with COVID, but, you know, the deficiencies in staffing isn't good too. So I just wish you the best and have a comprehensive discussion. You know, churches, you know, what's St. Joe's doing? You know, I know you guys can't answer a question, but how do I get a, I guess I'll, I've seen the public request for information online. Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry. That's ridiculous. How is the county supposed to maintain those requests for public information? You guys got your work cut out for you. Good luck.
Thank you, Brandon. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the board for comments, questions. Supervisor Starky?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Katie. And I think it's a testament to how lucky you are and your family that your parents showed up for you today to support you. And what I want to say is that not many people get that, right? And the kids that you're dealing with and the kids in the system don't have that. So I just applaud the work that you're being, that's being done over there. As a CASA, when I was a CASA, we're not just taking kids out of their home because their parents wouldn't let them have McDonald's. They're taking them out of their homes because they're abused, they're neglected, and they deserve better. So you see that day in and day out. It takes a toll on you, and you and your staff should be very thrilled with the outcomes that you have. So I'm grateful to you, and I'm grateful to all of DHHS for providing that. Thank you.
Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I think Supervisor Starky said it quite well. Obviously, you guys are under an incredible amount of pressure on a daily basis to basically perform state mandated services with very few employees. And you're trying to have those touch points on a daily basis. And it's an incredible amount of stress. It's an incredible amount of workload. But just want you to know that this board in particular supports that effort, and we'll do our best to try to get those staffing levels back up for you.
Yeah, that was just going to be kind of dovetailing off that comment. I noticed 16 social worker positions that were highlighted on your slide there. So it's a stark reminder, hasn't gone unnoticed by this board. So we'll hope to make that better in the near future.
And I just had one question on the last slide. It was the SIP plan, I believe. That's what it's called SIPs. So in the 2019 to 2023, you had five items, which you pointed out, and now you only have two. Is that because you completed all those goals and now you're moving on to new goals? Is that why those changed?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I'm curious.
Okay. Yes, so we achieved successful permanency for those two permanency outcomes, meaning that we were able to implement permanent plans for those foster youth. We lowered our numbers of ICWA youth, which is Indian Children, Indian Child Welfare Act, so it's Native American youth in our community. And we were able to identify a domestic violence service provider. We had been without a domestic violence service provider, and now we have a new one.
Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I was just curious because it looks like, I mean, you're making improvements even with all the difficulties. So good work.
Thank you.
Katie, I'm hosting a lunch on Friday that I don't know. I think it would be great for you to come. It's about domestic violence, and I'd love to have your input at that meeting, too.
I do have a staff member coming. That day I'll be out of town on training. But thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. No other comments? Okay, now we'll move on to our 10:45 timed item, and we'll adjourn as the Board of Supervisors reconvene as the Board of Equalization and conduct an appearance, not timely confirmed hearing, per the Del Norte County Board of Equalization, Local Rules, Section 8.4, for an assessment appeal filed by application. Is that person here? Okay, seeing they're not here, I would look for a motion to approve the assessor's assessment of this property.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you please pull the vote?
Public comment.
I'm sorry, public comment. Nope, seeing none?
Just have one quick question maybe Neil could answer. Is this person going to have another shot at bringing this back to the board? The appearance wasn't timely.
Neil, I can answer that. So they will not. So, yeah, they had a chance to show up today. If they would have arrived today, then they would have, we would have rescheduled their hearing right now because they didn't return the form that was required within a certain amount of time prior to the hearing.
Perfect.
But since they did not show today per those rules that are referenced, then you guys vote to uphold the assessor's value.
This was it. Are we good? Public comment was closed. Kylie, would you now please pull the votes?
Supervisor Starky? Yes. Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges.
Yes.
Seeing that we are ahead of schedule, I'll move on.
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, we're not.
We're still under Board of Equalization before we adjourn.
So then item 21, approve and authorize the withdrawal request for assessment of appeal application.
A move we approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for that?
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none. Kylie?
Supervisor Starky?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges.
Yes. Now, we're still going to jump ahead, and we will do the budget transfer, item number 25. Approve and adopt budget transfer number 3-01 in the amount of $2,400 within the drug and alcohol budget unit for the opioid litigation, work group incentives, and operational costs as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services.
Vice Chair, just for the record, we need to adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Board.
Kylie.
Sorry.
All right. I'll add that in there. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Equalization, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and address item number 25 as read.
Thank you.
Move we approve, budget transfer 03-01.
A motion and a second. A public comment? Seeing none. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starky?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges.
Yes. Okay. Seeing by the time I finish reading this, we'll be right on time. We are going to receive an 11 o'clock timed item presentation from Grant Wer School, the Chair of the Smith River Collaborative, and Donna Peppin, the SRNRA Natural Resource Specialist on the history and work of the SRC as requested by the Smith River Collaborative.
Good morning. And how often is this that you're just nailing it right on time?
You know, it's pretty impressive, right?
Totally. Okay, so we've already got the first slide up, which is perfect. And I would be remiss if I didn't say just a couple things about the Smith River. You know, we have the highest concentration of wild and scenic rivers, that national designation of any river in the United States. It's our drinking water. It's our magnet for our travel and tourism economy, as some of you have been testimonials for. But otherwise, the rest of this is business about the Smith River Collaborative, and we can go to the next slide.
There's a mouse right there, and you should be able to navigate. You can roll up or down and click whatever is easier for you.
Whoops. I think that is number two. Okay. So this is very easy to understand teamwork, efficiency, and outcomes. And on the working in a zone of agreement, I think I'll give an example that is so very different than the challenges that you have. The collaborative very narrowly defined what the focus would be. Whereas in your case, you have a lot of issues. People may show up at the podium and say, oh, yeah, there's another issue, too. Collaborative, very narrow focus. Okay, so I wrote a grant to the National Forest Foundation that funded our startup. That was in early 2016, co-chair leadership, and was a very important key. And with that, I really want to appreciate the role of Jerry Hemmingson as Chair. He stepped up. He leaned into this, and it was so incredibly important to have his commitment and time. So the joint venture with Six Rivers National Forest, think of the, our Forest Service partners as really essential part of the team. Discipline specialists, that would be foresters, hydrologists, botanists, planners, all of those very important functions. And in terms of the signatories, you know, I'm not going to read through that, but you can. And can we say, you know, there's a lot of examples of those parties not working really well together. But what Jerry and the Forest Service and I recognized is we needed desperately for them to work together in order to get outcomes. You needed certain stakeholders. I'll get this by the time I'm through here. So the one-page letter of mutual interest, when I said focus, we really, we got it down to one page. And we did borrow from some other collaboratives in our bio region, which actually had spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, with their community, talking about what's important. So we borrowed some. I do want to emphasize the Del Norte Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and if there's anybody here from the Del Norte Fire Safe Council, they really nailed that in terms of originally Dan and Cheryl Levitt pulling that together, and then more recently, you know, had other leadership, Becky Barlow and others. But that is absolutely the key to getting funding. And getting funding, as you know, in your line of work, oh, you can talk about a lot of stuff, but if you don't raise the money, guess what? You're still talking about it five, six, seven years later. And again, on the working in a zone of agreement, think of that as a recipe. And that particular project, the Gordon Hill Project, a lot of environmental documentation, many years to do it. And it was the recipe in terms of, well, how do you treat timber stand improvement? What do we do with roads? How do we survey for endangered species? So once you have that recipe dialed in, that allowed us to apply that to future projects very, very efficiently. And as I said, co-chair leadership, trust with Six Rivers National Forest, and I think this is a perfect time to have Donna take over. And then, you know, the facilitation and teamwork with Jerry and Donna, over to you.
Thank you, Grant. Let me move it forward here. So I'm just going to briefly cover the project's successes and what currently we're working on with the collaborative. So in sharing a collective vision and passion for the Smith River watershed, the Smith River Collaborative has really been successful at helping the Smith River National Recreation Area meet its land management needs by helping to increase funding and capacity to get the work done on the ground. Most notably, our biggest achievement through working collaboratively has been the increase in pace and scale of landscape level fuels reduction treatments within the wild and urban interface. So you can see by this slide, I'm not going to go over all the, all the money and acres treated, but it's millions of dollars obtained by working collaboratively. And that has been implemented on the ground to equal thousands of acres treated, not only on national forest system lands, but also on adjacent private lands and all within the Toluah Ancestral Territory. And through monitoring after the Smith River complex, we can confidently tell you today that those efforts were successfully completed and contributed to the minimal loss of structures during the Smith River complex, especially in the communities of Gaski and the Washington Flat and Little Jones areas. So beyond fuels reduction, the Smith River Collaborative has helped further support project planning and implementation of not only integrated vegetation management projects, but travel management projects, and even kind of creeping into planning for new mountain bike trails on the Smith River National Recreation Area. In 2021, the Smith River Alliance, under the umbrella of the collaborative, applied for and got Del Norte County Resource Advisory Council funding to develop the collaborative's first-ever operations manual. And once complete, this manual will really become the governing document of the collaborative moving forward. So going back to fuels reduction treatments, what we want to have this map get across is all of the amazing fuels reduction efforts that are ongoing on the landscape, either implemented or continually to, you know, are being implemented and maintained for future use. And so it's really important to notice that these efforts have been strategically placed on main roads and ridge tops to help protect those communities at risk within the wild and urban interface. So moving forward, we continue to expand on our efforts, working collaboratively to implant or implement projects on the ground, including, including our North Kanapki and South Kanapki project areas. Those two project areas had assigned decision, and now we've moved into implementation, and implementation is being accomplished through an agreement with the National Wild Turkey Federation. And also, the collaborative has been successful in seeking and obtaining the funding. Currently, we're applying for National Fish and Wildlife Foundation funding for two projects. The first project is going to go towards completing landscape level fuels reduction efforts, again, in the Gaski, Hayuchi, Station 3, Masai Siatne, or Papas Flat, as most people efforts, again, in the Gaski, Hayuchi, Station 3, Masai Sietne, or Pappas Flat, as most people know it as, and additionally, a portion of Iroquois tribally managed lands. There's also a Fisher Humboldt Martin monitoring component that Fish and Wildlife is going to implement if we get that funding. So really cool. And the second project that we are seeking funding for is to get additional funds to complete the implementation of our Kanopki Restoration Project area. And again, that is being completed through an agreement with the National Wild Turkey Federation. And lastly, we continue to plan our NEPA projects, and the next project we're working on is the Rowdy Divide Project with an expected decision sometime in September 2024, if we can get through the fire repair and everything. So with that, we hope that this presentation underlines the importance and value that working collaboratively has to get meaningful work done on the ground. Thank you.
Grant, did you have anything else?
There's literally hundreds of these left. There's a page-
Could you speak a little more into the mic, Grant, please?
Thanks, Chris. There's hundreds of these left. The Fire Safe Councils around the state produce these. There's a page on the collaborative. There's two pages on our Delnort Fire Safe Council. Just about anything that you would, you know, if you lived in Gaski or Big Flat and you were in a higher fire-risk area, anything that you wanted to communicate to a neighbor in terms of how homes catch fire, what's defensible space, it's all in here. And I'll leave about 50 copies on that little table just as you go through the double doors for you to hand out, and if you ever need any more, just let me or the Fire Safe Council know, and we'll get them to you. Thank you. And again, you know, appreciating Jerry for really stepping up and leaning into this. It wouldn't have been possible without his involvement.
Great. Thank you, guys. Before we open it to the board, I'll open it up to public comment. Do you have any public comment on this presentation?
Just a question.
Sure.
Are any of the projects that this collaborative and the Forest Service going to be directed at the power lines that are coming into the county? Are there any projects for fuel reduction surrounding that, those areas, for, you know, potential future fires that may impact our delivery of electricity in the county? Thank you.
Great question, Sam.
Good question.
Yes, thank you. That is a wonderful question, and I appreciate you bringing that up. So yes, indeed, we are working on fuels reduction efforts adjacent to those power lines, especially within that new funding proposal that we're working on that will complete efforts in the Masai Sietne, Pappas Flat area, which really is strategic in backing up those, the treatments that the PAC, Pacific Power, did during the fire and reinforcing those, not only on the front end but in the back end as well. So yes, we definitely, as we move forward with our project planning and new NEPA planning areas, obviously Rowdy Divide Project area, you know, we've got that kind of covered in the Masai Sietne portion, but the next project area after that is what we're calling Holiday Monkey Area, and that will treat the fuels, again, from the bottom and the top of the power lines on that side of kind of Patrick Creek area.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you again, Chairman. You know, it's kind of disappointing that the Forest Service is here, and we have to have a nonprofit give them direction? Is that how bad things have gotten? It seems so. I mean, yes, we need forest management. We need fuel reduction, especially around residences, right? And I can see why they want their residents or their business protected. That makes sense. $4.4 million from Congressman Huffman to get what, a manual? Does that include fuel reduction or just the manual? $4.4 million? Is that more than a manual, or? You mentioned, well, you were funded $4.4 million through Congressman Huffman, correct? I have it online.
Could you direct your questions up here?
Yeah, I guess I could bring it online, or, you know-
Was this in the presentation you saw that? Is that where yours, the $4.4 million, or which?
He's talking about a different funding source. He's talking about NOAA, which is funding for restoration of the coastal plain.
So that has nothing to do with this presentation?
Oh. I understand. All right. Because last time, he was saying our water was contaminated. So I'm just wondering where we're at here, and where the money's going, and I'd hope you'd do the same. Thank you.
So I've just kind of, and with your first comment of why I think it should be more looked at as us working together with the Forest Service and, you know, everyone collaborative, everybody collaboratively functioning as one unit for the greater good, I think is more of a, is the way I look at it, at least.
You need to do their job.
Grant, would you like to come up?
Well, first, I do want to say really clearly what great respect that I have for the Forest Service teams that we've been working with. And, you know, obsession about getting the work done well, the Forest Service brings that, and they have some of the same challenges the county does in terms of filling positions sometimes, but listen, they have been fabulous in terms of the disciplines that I'm talking about, the foresters, the planners. And think of the collaborative as just those stakeholders that are giving feedback in helping accelerate the process of approving projects and finding the money, okay? So first, I want to speak to that because something that Brendan said makes me feel very uncomfortable of not properly respecting and appreciating the work of these professionals. Point two, Brendan is confused. He saw a press release from Congressman Huffman about NOAA funding, and that NOAA funding addresses coastal restoration projects and a restoration project in the East Fork Mill Creek area within Redwood National and State Park. That is salmoated habitat-related funding, highly competitive, and it's entirely different than what we're talking about here with the collaborative. And I think that's probably enough, Sid. Thank you.
Plenty. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions, comments? Supervisor Howard?
No. I wanted to take this opportunity because I think, as laid out very well by Mr. Worsholz, the collaborative's efforts, really to align a multitude of opinions from agencies and tribal interests, county interests, et cetera, and the community, took a heavy lift. It really did. And it really took the Forest Service and our players at the time, and the county, and the Smith River Alliance to gather those interests and find alignment and find path forward. And I think it really speaks to the efforts that were put in place at the time, especially with the leadership of Mr. Worsholz and Supervisor Hemmingson to get us to that point. We, as the collaborative, as the county participated in, guys really moved the needle. And I don't think you toot your horn enough to the protections that were made, and I think, Donna, you said it quite well, but the protections that were made to our communities through those efforts during the Smith River complex. Without them, things would have been run through. There's no question in my mind. But we did move the needle. We did address massive fuel load issues on our national forest, and that was done through us going out, thinking collaboratively, how to find the resources, which the Forest Service didn't have, to bring into this equation, and do it while aligning all the special interests that go into an opinion about our national forest and how it's going to be managed. So I've really got to compliment that process. Really, my only ask today, and it's a very minor ask, I'd love to see one of my fellow board members return in a leadership role somewhere into that collaborative. I know it's my district, pretty much, 100%, but I'd love to see one of our board representatives pulled back in to help fill the shoes that Jerry left. And so if that could be considered at some point in the near future, I'd love to see that take place.
Great. Any other comments up here?
Sure.
I just appreciate the fuels reduction work that's going on. Can't echo that enough. Appreciate the Forest Service for taking that on and the presentation today. Appreciate the information. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, guys, for all your efforts. We appreciate it, and thank you for the presentation. Thanks, guys. Heading on to general government. Item number 22. We are looking to approve the recommended foundational elements of the 2425 Strategic Plan, specifically the vision, mission, and values, and the focus areas and goals as the recommend, as recommended by the strategic planning team.
Good morning, Board. So another presentation. Yay! I'll try to be brief. I know this is-
Take your time.
Okay. Perfect. So the strategic plan, the foundational elements, which is kind of how I've characterized where we're at in your board report, I think is kind of to the point that was ironically made earlier by Mr. Bieber, you know, wanting to see action, wanting to see concrete, you know, deliverables. And as he was speaking, I was thinking that, you know, Mr. Bieber's a very talented builder, and I know this from working in the planning department for a number of years, and when you build something, you have to start at the foundation. And there's a reason why I've characterized where we're at as foundational elements in this process, because I think that's important to recognize what we need to focus these efforts on. So in the context of planning, a foundational element really is the basics. What is our mission? What is our vision? What are our values? And so through, I think, the kickoff week that occurred with Mr. Ashton, who you all met, I think we were able to have some really good, engaged conversations, not just with the board, but with our department leaders, with the community. I was really pleased with the process that we had, the engagement through with the public at the public workshop that same week. And everything that we received, you know, we really tried to receive as the strategic planning team, we really tried to make it clear that what we wanted was as much input as we could get. You know, leave it to us to kind of sort through and to kind of piece it all together. This is a really complicated puzzle. What we want to avoid is kind of a process in computer programming, which has to do with garbage in and garbage out. You know, we didn't want this to just be a simple garbage in, garbage out procedure. You know, we wanted to receive all the information, kind of sort through it, and really hopefully identify some commonalities and some themes that led us in a different direction where we could avoid that outcome. So where we landed with respect to vision, and this is a recommend, all these are recommendations. Again, we're building a plan here, we're dictating what the plan is, we're just presenting kind of the conclusion of engagement with the public and stakeholders, identifying those themes, gathering information. And so the theme that we heard pretty repeatedly was that we're not living up to our potential. And in a vision statement, that's kind of, that's kind of your, you know, it's kind of implicit. I think Mr. Ashton stated a couple times to all of you, a vision is maybe impossible to live up to, but it's your, it's your vision, it's what you aspire towards. So we aspire to exceed all expectations of government through outstanding public service for the residents and visitors to what we view as California's most spectacular place, Delnort County. I want to focus on the spectacular place being where we're at. That was a theme we heard, I think, virtually from everyone. And again, living up to that potential is what our aspiration should be. So this is what we recommend, be included as, again, the foundational element, the plan, specifically the vision. Moving forward to the mission, so kind of how do you, how do you recognize your vision? How do you recognize a process to advance your vision? You have to have a mission. So respecting and honoring the traditional values and diverse heritage of our community while advancing innovative solutions to the challenges of today and tomorrow. Again, a theme that we heard virtually from everyone was, we have a great traditional heritage here in this county. We all, those of us that were fortunate to grow up here, know that. Those of us that have, that have come to this area from other places can probably pretty easily see that, but that doesn't mean we should be satisfied. We obviously have a ton of challenges. How do we address those challenges? We need to be innovative. We need to be creative. We know that our resources are limited. Our capacity is constrained. We need to be, we need to be, I think, again, as Mr. Bieber said, bold in our thinking. Values. So vision and mission is nothing without values. Values, again, are things that we aspire towards and recognize the value in. A theme that we heard repeatedly in sorting through the data was our workforce, our employees. They're our single greatest resource, and we don't have enough of it. So how, what do we do in the plan tactically to address that? We'll get there. Service to the public. Obviously, the county is a public service agency. We want to provide quality and responsive services to all of the residents of this county, all of. Integrity and accountability. As individuals and as an organization, we hold ourselves accountable to each other, to our residences, and to our partners. Had a great conversation with Mr. Worsholz and the Forest Service, their own partnerships and the value of it, and want to recognize that. Transparency. We recognize transparency is essential to making informed decisions and building trust in the community. Fiscal responsibility. We apply the best financial practices to protect and enhance the community and resources of Delnort County. And lastly, again, kind of acknowledging the specialness of this place and the people that are here, respect for this place of plenty and the Delnort County culture that exists here. So that's the mission, vision, and values. That's, again, a foundational element of where we hope this plan is going to be headed with the focus areas and the goals, which we will move to now. So the planning framework that we defined, there shouldn't be shortcuts. It should be a thoughtful process that leads towards, towards actions, but you can't circumvent the process. If you do, you risk jeopardizing your ability to deliver, and you likely end up with a product, I think, as Mr. Ashton said, ends up on the shelf because it doesn't have any value or purpose. To do, to get to those action items, we need to, we need to recognize that our capacity is limited. We can't throw, you know, a million different actions into the plan and expect that we're going to be able to do it all. So how do we, how do we get focused? Well, through the engagement process that we had with you, with the department leadership, and with, with the employees and other stakeholders in the community, we really landed on four areas. The first is our staffing and capacity. The second is infrastructure and economic development. The third is law, justice, and homelessness. And the fourth is general governance and budget. And you could argue that some of these areas may be redundant, and maybe some of the areas don't necessarily overlap at all, but we really tried to, again, kind of distill all of the information that we had received into something hopefully logical and that would lead us towards some solutions. The first focus area, the goal within this focus area of staffing and capacity is reducing our vacancy rates. Again, we heard a prime example this morning of a department saying, hey, we don't have the resources, our vacancy rates are unsustainable, and our employees are being affected. We need to reduce those vacancy rates. The second, improving recruitment outcomes and expanding the hiring process. The theme that we heard pretty consistently through our engagement was the hiring process is slow, recruitment outcomes aren't as successful as we would like them to be, and we want to improve in those areas. Reducing employee turnover and increasing retention would be the third goal within the county staffing and capacity focus area. And then the last goal within this focus area would be improved access to housing opportunities for county employees. This one, I didn't, the first three, I think, are kind of predictable. This last one might be predictable, but I wasn't fully thinking that it would emerge from this process, although it is something that, after it was repeated several times, it's pretty obvious that, you know, this is, this is a limitation. When we have potential employees who can't find housing, or current employees who can't keep housing, it affects your workforce. So moving on to the second focus area, which is our infrastructure and economic development focus. The first goal would be maintaining or improving county facilities and infrastructure. The second would be supporting countywide economic development. The third would be improving the aesthetics of county-owned property and facilities. And these goals probably speak for themselves. Obviously, the county has, again, we have accountability that we've acknowledged in the mission, vision, and values, and part of the accountability is recognizing that we own county property that's contributing to this image that people have of the community when they, when they visit here. when they, when they visit here. So, there's, there's room for improvement. Countywide economic development was a theme that, again, I think, occurred with virtually everyone that we spoke to, and you can see the effects of not having a countywide focus on economic development in our, in our demographics. So, this would be, from an organizational perspective, something that we, as the county and you, as the board, could hopefully find solutions for and contribute to in a positive way, would be the idea. Moving into focus area three, improving the community indigent defense system. This did occur in the conversations, but it really relates to previous board direction and what was identified through the Office of the State Public Defender last year in terms of the data that exists for Delnort County with regard to indigent defense and outcomes that relate to that. So, as a focus area, this really, you know, kind of taps into something that the board has already given direction on, but would be improving our, our system if there's, if there's solutions there. And we've had conversations about some of those. So, whenever, whenever solutions are presented there, I suspect they won't be a total surprise, but it is going to be a matter of just how do we, how do we do it? The second goal within this focus area would be proactively and collaboratively addressing community homelessness. And again, this goal shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. We've had a lot of conversations about it. There is an existing ad hoc committee that was established, kind of with the idea that this is something that needs the, the attention of the, of the board. And so hopefully, we'll be able to come up with some solutions that tie into the work of, of the ad hoc, that can get us some positive traction on, on that goal. The third, improving and expanding opportunities and upstream interventions for justice in all youth. The fourth focus area, this one might be a little bit boring to some, but it's arguably maybe the most important in terms of how you run your organization. It's your general governance and your budget. First and foremost, the conversations that we've had with other counties, it almost always is, how do you just maintain your core service levels first? You have to do that before you can do really any, anything else. The community relies on a number of services from this community that are vital. How do we maintain that in these challenging economic times? Second, fiscal responsibility. Again, this one shouldn't be much of a surprise to anyone that had emerged from the course of, of our engagement. Third would be improving the oversight of county programs and services. There's potentially some structural solutions there that we've discussed with Mr. Ashton. As we get into the, into the tactical part of this conversation, I think you're going to become, you know, a little more clearer. And then the fourth, again, this is just a cultural thing for the, for the organization. How do we embed this sort of process into what we do? Some of the conversations that we've had, you know, preliminarily is, whenever the board takes action on any given item, how does it relate to the plan? You guys have already agreed to a plan once this thing is fully developed and approved, and that should take a lot of the work out of the debates that happen whenever certain issues arise later that tie specifically to the plan. So, hopefully, it would make your work easier. So, that is really kind of the broad overview of these really kind of high-level conversations. What we're asking for today would be approval of these foundational elements so that we can get really involved in, in the work of identifying solutions to these, to these challenges and goals of the board. As Mr. Ashton had previously presented to you, and I believe in the conversations that we had during the, the one-on-one sessions, we have a very aggressive timeline. We want this process to be concluded and be useful to you as the policymakers of the county going into the budget. Our goal is to have the draft ready for your review and the public's input on April 9th, and then hopefully have the final plan, the clear plan, available, published, and, and been ready to, to go live, April 23rd. We haven't presented what the clear plan is going to look like yet, but we have given you access to some of the, you know, the information that relates to the service from ClearGov. I think you're going to be really excited. I think the public's going to be very happy to see the transparency and the accountability that this platform is going to provide just inherently. And then, you know, again, having it updated regularly, reported out on regularly, and just available to the public. So, anyway, if we can do that, again, very aggressive, but if we can do it by April 23rd, that'll be amazing. We'll have a really good plan, I think, to build on moving forward. All the goals that we have here honestly exceeded my anticipation of, of the number of goals that we would ultimately end up with, but I think just based on the conversations, it's really clear that these are important issues to, to the board, to the, to the departments that implement these services and provide these programs into the community. So, that is the plan, and I am available for any questions.
Okay. Great job, Randy. First, I'm going to open up to public comment, if we have any out there.
So, as I understand it, the plan, the strategic plan is to make local government whole, and then by doing so, you're going to make the community whole. Is that my sense of what I just heard?
Hello. Norma Williams again, chapter president, Delnort County Employees Association, SEIU 1021. This is rather interesting, but not surprising. And I had to reread it several times in order to temper my comments and responses. County employees have always known, as far back as I remember being here, and I've been here for 30 years with the county, that county employees are the number one resource. Of course, we've always known that. We've made sacrifices along the way whenever we've needed to, when budgets and economic times warranted it, and we did so willingly in order to protect and preserve jobs. Right now, when you look at basically dealing with reducing county vacancies among, and also the turnover, increasing retention, I mean, actually decreasing vacancies and increasing retention, the first thing that comes to mind with all of you is the salaries, and you see that as a statewide issue. It's relevant, obviously, to Delnort, but it's not just salaries. I think you really need to do a deep dive as to why your employees are leaving. It's not just the salaries. If you bother to even ask the pertinent questions, you will be surprised at the answers. My question, obviously, which I know you can't answer, would be for you to actually, do you really know within each department, with each subunit or branch, or even units within those branches, what the vacancy rates are? Truly, what the vacancy rates are, when you do it actual down in the weeds? That's something you should ask. It's a report we always get, what we did ask for, we will ask for it again. I will. But that's something you should ask. But that's, that's of various importance. Overall, I think what I'm going to do is, I've been told to trust this process, and I know that I have supported a strategic plan as a county resident. But as a county employee and as a union leader, trust is earned and hard to come by. You will have some employees who will, some who won't, and some who will be in the middle. As a union leader right now, I will reserve my main comments until I actually see the final plan. And because it's a little voice inside that's telling me, "Gui dao norima, gui dao." And that's because I'm not too sure yet whether I can trust this. Is this going to be a plan of reality or a plan of fantasy? We'll see.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on out.
I'm taller. My name's Candace Tinkler. I'm a resident of Crescent City and Delnort County. First of all, I want to apologize because somehow I missed this whole idea about there was going to be a public survey and all of that, and so that's my bad. And I, I did do a little homework, and it looks like you had it on your Facebook page as of February 13th. I think you had some things in Wild River outpost and things. So, I did miss that until literally the day after. But my point being that I think it could have been, I know that's hard, but I think it could have been better advertised. I've asked all sorts of my neighbors and friends, and no one's like, what? And I think Valerie mentioned that maybe about 400 people responded out of 27,000 Delnort County residents. That's only 1.5 or so percent of the county. So, that's not a criticism, really. That's just reality. I know how hard it is to advertise things. What I wanted to say just briefly is, I think it's very exciting that you're asking public opinion, and I know this is a very limited, my, my limited understanding of the plan is this will be only for a short term, and it's just the beginning. So, I have no problems about that. What I want to say is, I think it's an exciting opportunity to maybe think about ways that we could have public dialogue like that ongoing with maybe a lot more time for people to think about it. I know you have very much, you know, a calendar for this particular situation, but I just wanted to say that I think there's a lot of opportunities to really engage the public. Maybe I'm a little old school because of my age, but maybe like a mailer would have been nice, so we knew about this. I know that's expensive. And then my other last comment is, I did look at the poll. I think it's too late for me to respond, but I did look at the questions because they were still up on the website, and I found some of those questions quite leading, and I'd like them to be a little more open, open questions. And I'd like to be part of that, if there's any way I could volunteer to help. I have a lot of ideas of public engagement. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, I will close it and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Howard?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kick it off. Really, I'm really glad we're, we're walking down this path right now. I think Randy brought it up, but with any strategic plan, it's, it's a plan that does not need to collect dust on our shelves. And I think really, post-plan, whatever comes out of this, we as a board really need to make sure that it's a, a plan that involves strategic doing, based on whatever focus areas and goals we set forth within. So, we need to really adopt those pieces and really hold staff accountable to whatever extent we can, once this plan is adopted. Within the focus areas, I really wanted to have a discussion with the board on whether or not these focus areas are equally weighted, meaning is there a focus area that needs to come before another? And the reason I say that, in, in just listening to what the public has communicated to us at our last meeting, and then plus what we probably said individually, but now see as a whole on these documents, it's going to be tough to do some of these without the proper resources. And a lot of this is driven by general fund activity. And the bottom line is that our general fund, to a certain extent, at least since I've been on the board, really hasn't moved much at all. And to, to accomplish things, I think there's probably areas that need to come first with focus before others come forward. And I just wanted to really express that idea to the board with the idea that if there is a willingness to potentially focus in some areas more at first than others, it might be something for us to consider. As we heard last week, all of us, because we were there, from Alex Stompke, who's our economic development advisor with the E.C. Cooperative Extension, our community-specific economic development is not diverse. It is just, bottom line, we're not diverse. And for obvious reasons, things have pretty much crumbled, natural resource-driven economy crumbled a long time ago, and trying to rebuild areas around that economy has come slow. But there is willingness, not only in the state of California, but also within the nation, to see some of those efforts change. But what I would encourage the board, especially as it relates to focus item two, and really is, in order to make our community successful and ourselves successful, we really need to drive ways that increase revenues outside of taxation to our bottom line, which in turn impacts our general fund. So, that's just food for thought. I know we're in a race to the finish line by April, but I would also encourage the board, if necessary, to slow the process down and take time to get additional community input as needed.
Supervisor Sargi?
Yeah, thank you. And I, and I agree with Supervisor Howard with his comments, but what I think is the next steps are, when we go in the focus area, right, correct? You have three focus areas, is then to come up with action plans. So, I think that's where some of the, the concerns might be addressed then. So, support of countywide economic development, those are going to be the action steps on how we can get that done. Is that correct, Randy? I'm just kind of going off my probation officer days with case plans, so.
Yeah, shocked. Yes, it is correct. And to kind of clarify that point a little more, what we're hoping to do, and I think Supervisor Howard makes a really on, on point comment, is our capacity, which I alluded to. And so, within the strategies and the actions that we're going to hopefully be bringing forward soon, one thing that we've already done as the strategic planning team is to kind of look at what's going to be realistic with our resources and our capacity. What that ultimately looks like is going to be a board decision, but I would anticipate whenever the draft is brought forward, what we will do will be have something very visual that will kind of have years and even quarters that we'll assign all these different tasks to, that will kind of show how they'll be implemented, quarter one of '24, '25, quarter two, et cetera. And then from there, once I think the pieces are identified, again, I think the board could have a really good conversation as to where, how the pieces kind of get moved around and implemented. Yeah, it's, there's going to be a lot of action items that are developed from these goals. There's no shortage of goals, and so it is going to be a very real question of how do we, how do we strategically implement the plan, which is kind of the point.
Right. And so then, with regard to Candace's point, I'd love to see more community engagement, too. How, and when we develop these action plans, how is the community going to get an opportunity to be involved?
I would say probably similar, similarly to what we did with the first phase of, of the information gathering. I apologize that it doesn't work for everybody, but it's really good, I think, for a lot of people to do these free anonymous polls, where they can just click on a link and kind of go through the questions. And we actually structured the questions to be as kind of open as, as we could. We didn't do like A, B, and C options. We left it so people could literally write in whatever their thoughts were, and I don't think there was any limitation on, on how long they decided to do that. We advertised on the radio. We did PRA with local media. So, we really, and within the timeframe and the resources that were allocated for the project, I think we did a really good job, but I can understand how certain people, people might want, you know, like physical mailers in the, in the mail and things like that. It's, that's probably how it was done for a long time.
So, will there be a follow-up, though? Will the, the public be able to be involved with regard to the action steps? I think-
Yes.
Okay. So, there'll be another survey coming out?
There will be another survey.
Okay. So, we've got media here today with the triplicate, and I, I know that media with the Wild Rivers normally watches online, so we'll make sure that we get that out into the public with regard to that, because I think it's, it is very important for our public to kind of help us guide what our strategic plan is as well. And with that, I just want to say that I, I love all the focus areas. I think they're, it's all very vague, or very broad, not vague. It's very broad, but I'm hoping that when we come back April 9th, where we will have narrowed that down. And my other question is, and my final question, is, will the board be able to provide input into those action steps as well?
Yes.
Through the process, not at the end.
Right. So, the poll is going to be how we're, we're receiving the information, and again, the more we can get, the better. It's going to be focused organizationally on, on, you know, county services and county programs. So, the first focus will be on direct stakeholders, which are the, the employees.
Okay.
But it'll be available to anyone that receives the information. That would include the board. The last time that we did this, we structured the questions a little bit differently for the board than we did for the department leaders and the stakeholders. I think that was kind of successful, but I think the conversations that we had were better. But now that we've really kind of distilled and focused on those specific focus areas and goals, I think that the, the questions are going to be more obvious in terms of how they relate to things that are going to be actionable that the board can, can weigh in on in a very clear way. In addition to the poll that we do, I mean, you're always welcome to have a conversation with, schedule a time, or just shoot us, shoot us an email, whatever, whatever works best for you.
I, I really appreciate your work.
Sure.
Supervisor Short? Supervisor Short?
Yeah, I was just going to say they, they pretty much hit, my concerns was kind of the priority list. How are we going to form that so that those questions were all answered to my satisfaction? I just wanted to thank Randy for taking the lead on this and Neil for getting this going. It's, it's much needed and it's encouraging. I think all the points we hit with our focus area, missions and values were, were well-stated and I appreciate the questions from my other colleagues.
Yeah, I would agree. You guys have put in a lot of effort and you've really moved this right along and keep up the good work. It's really appreciated. So at this time, a motion to approve?
Just one last comment, and this is reflecting on Supervisor Starkey's comments and follow-up to Randy's conversation with us. This board should not be afraid to slow this process down. It, it does seem rushed to me, short period of time to get something potentially published. This is going to be living with us for a while. So if this, this is the board's process. It's, we're directing staff to do this and they're putting a lot of time and at a point when we have limited capacity. So I want to encourage us to take our time to ensure that the public has the input and I think that will happen, but if necessary, slow it down if we have to and go forward.
I can certainly appreciate that. That April 23rd goal is, it is pretty ambitious, but if we don't hit that, we'll be close to it. But getting those necessary steps in, I can, I can agree with. With that, I'll approve the, or I'll motion, I'll move that we approve the recommended foundational elements of the 2425 strategic plan.
And I will second that.
So let's see, we've had public comment, we have a motion, we have a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay. Item 23. We are looking to approve and adopt a resolution of the Delnor County Board of Supervisors extending the shelter crisis in Delnor County and waiving competitive bidding requirements for the county emergency shelter and micro-village site.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Come on up.
Good morning. I just haven't been in construction for over 30 years, not getting competitive bids. It's somebody's getting kickbacks or wasting the county's money. So I think all that should be very transparent. We need to know exactly who's getting that money and it would be nice to do it to somebody in the county, however, I don't know if anybody can handle it. But if you can see what's going on at law market, they got people from Sacramento, Fresno, all over, all over the state that are coming to do the work and maybe we can fit out the smaller stuff with people around here, but I think there should be only competitive bidding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, Kylie, would you pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Item number 24. Approve and adopt the memorandum of understanding between the county of Delnor and the Delnor County Sheriff's Employee Association effective March 15th, 2024, as recommended by county administrative officer.
I'd move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Seeing none, Kylie, would you pull, oh.
I just have one question. When, when these MOUs get approved, is it just between the employees and the administration or department heads get a chance to weigh in on this? Because it impacts the way they can run their departments.
It's through collective bargaining. They're represented by a group that the board recognizes as a sole bargaining group for an employee association. So the department heads are not usually consulted. It can be seen as direct dealing if the department head gets involved.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just a lot of the, the impacts and the changes that happen within the MOU potentially will have impacts on the way a department head can run their department, especially, especially, this is specific to the sheriff. So I just had wondered if the sheriff gets an opportunity to weigh in because he has to really remove himself from the collective bargaining.
Yes, he does. They have a chief negotiator that was hired by SEA. That's their group of folks that their bargaining unit has selected to represent them. And so that's who collectively represents them in their negotiations.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Kylie?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Borges?
Yes.
Okay, seeing as that is our last item, I will report out that we will.
Not really.
Did I miss something?
Legislative and budget issues, if anybody has any.
Is any legislative or budget issues?
Okay. Yeah, well, we always gloss over this and there should be legislative and budget issues every time we have this item on the agenda. I know Randy has our legislative platform that we have adopted, but in addition, I have brought up at our last meeting SB 951, which we had received a letter from the county of San Francisco on before our last board meeting. I appreciate Supervisor Short following up with Yoder and Ling, our lobbyists in California, to see if this is an issue that we should weigh in on. And I still believe it is an issue that we should weigh in on. And I'd like to see some board direction potentially for a conversation amongst the board on potentially taking a supportive stance on this legislation at our next board
Appreciate that Supervisor Howard. Yeah, I'll be bringing that up to RCRC tomorrow morning and finishing that conversation with Yoder and Ling to see if possibly we can get an amendment to, to make it affect all coastal counties rather than just the San Francisco area. Possibly. Haven't explored all avenues yet, but I do agree with you. Yeah, it's, it's something that we should definitely pursue.
Any other legislative and budgeting issues? Okay. Seeing none, we will have to go back into closed session and there shouldn't be anything to report out. Is that correct?
Correct. There shouldn't be anything to report out.